So it is 6:00 PM. I would like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the Easton School Committee Meeting of Thursday, May 9th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members may be remote or in person, and remote attendance shall count toward form. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. For tonight's meeting, all members are actually present. We do not have any remote committee members, so we are all here in person. This meeting is open to the public. Members of the public attending in person who wish to make comments will be invited to do so during the public comment period of tonight's meeting. During that time, you will be required to state your name and address before beginning comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and I'll give additional info and instruction when we get to that part of our agenda. Alrighty, so with that, we can move to the first item on the agenda, which is a vote to approve the meeting minutes from April 24th, 2024, and the executive session minutes from April 24th, 2024. Do any committee members have any questions, comments, or suggested edits on the regular meeting minutes from April 24th?
No, I did not.
Okay, alright. Then would somebody like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 24th, 2024?
So moved, Loomis.
Second, DeLuca.
And roll call vote, yeah, because we listed it as a hybrid meeting, so we'll go with that.
DeLuca, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Percy, yes.
And executive session minutes from April 24th. Before we vote whether or not to approve with release or not release, does anybody have any questions, comments, or edits that would require holding these over to a future executive session?
I do not have any edits, no.
Okay, alrighty. So with that, I can take a motion to either approve and not release at this time, or approve and release at this time. My suggestion would be to approve and not release at this time.
I agree.
Okay, alright. So I'll make that motion to approve the executive session minutes from April 24th, 2024, not to be released at this time. Can I get a second?
Percy, a second.
Roll call vote.
Luca, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Percy, yes.
Okay, great, alright. Next item on the agenda, the opioid mitigation payment discussion. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So we've been trying to keep you up to date on the opioid mitigation payments. There was a suit which resulted in payments for the mitigation of the opioid crisis. Those payments, we have not determined how much it's going to be, but it does go directly to the town. So we're meeting with Connor Reed and with Wendy and myself and Andrea to try to keep abreast of how much it's going to be. They don't know at this point. The last meeting we had, I was hoping I had more information for you, but they don't know yet how much it's going to be. Right now, it will be for any current initiatives, but it's very specific to things like professional development, education for students, educational materials, cessation programs, and things of that nature. As soon as we know any amounts, or what we'll be able to use them on, we'll let you know.
Right, I appreciate the update. Do any committee members have questions?
Yeah, just had a question. Is it going to be, do we think that it will allow us to fund programs that are already planned for, or for programs that we have not yet initiated, but we're hoping to initiate through some of the community programs?
The intention is for the town, on the town side, for families and so forth, and for us, for students primarily, is to create new programs to stem the growing problem, which is why it's being put in place. But we, since we don't know how much it's going to be, and we don't know if we're getting it yet, we can't really plan for what that will be. So as soon, so we're kind of staying hot on trying to figure out what it's going to be, so then we can think to the future.
Wonderful. Great. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, alright. Well, we look forward to tracking development on that and seeing the results. Okay. I am going to make a motion to table item four, which is a discussion of the budget transfer process/authorization. Dr. Cabral and Andrea have been working on some materials for this, but there's some additional material coming, and I think this would be better suited and folded more holistically to a conversation that we've been talking about, having a future school committee discussion or workshop on the overall budget invoice, warrant reconciliation, all of that process, especially where we have some new members. I know that that's been a question. So my suggestion would be, and I'll make the motion, is to table this until we fold that into the broader discussion at a future meeting.
Does it have any impact on decisions that we need to make in the short term?
No. Okay.
No, we're just, Ms. Arshavsky is researching different districts for information, and they just have not responded to her yet.
Yep, that makes sense. As long as there's no timeliness, urgent timeliness to it.
Yeah, no, but it's just part of sort of general overall, you know, with Ms. Arshavsky here, and able to implement and update some processes and do some education.
Yep.
So, just best practices.
Yep, that would be great to fold it into that workshop, then.
Okay, great. So I make a motion then to table item four to a future meeting. Can I get a second?
So moved. Or second, Loomis.
Thank you. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes. Percy, yes.
Okay. Next up is item five, public hearing on school choice. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So we, Mrs. Souza just put in your packet, it's a presentation from DESI. It's available publicly on the DESI website about school choice. Every year, there has to be a public hearing for the school committee, and the school committee has to vote on whether the district will be school choice or not. Just a quick recap, school choice is when, it doesn't have to be the entire district, it can be certain grades for a certain number of students. You open up seats to the community at large, and other districts can have their students come to Easton instead of their home district. Every district receives $5,000 from the sending district, and to date, we have not done it. We don't have a grade level even that has the spaces available for us to add students, and some schools, it's very advantageous. There are some schools that are almost closing because enrollment is so low, but this allows them to bring in like full classes, or, you know, a third of a grade of students. We don't have that issue. In fact, our enrollment is anticipated to increase because of the new school, so we have not done it to this point, but you need to determine whether you want to do it and vote on it for the next school year.
Okay. And remind me, is the tuition, the sending district pays still capped at $5,000?
Yes.
Which is a, less than a third of our per pupil spending.
Correct.
So, yeah, so you're adding students to your district, but not getting fully reimbursed for that cost.
If you're, like I said, if your enrollment is really low, you're having trouble paying for staff, and you can add entire classes of students and bring that up, that's, can be very advantageous. We're just not in that situation right now.
Okay. Do any committee members have any questions on school choice?
So not a question about school choice, but our next item says we're supposed to vote, and I thought we had to have two readings on school choice. You had to have one reading, then the second reading?
No, on policies, you do. You just have to have a public hearing posted.
But not on school choice, we don't?
Correct.
Okay.
I did have one question. So when we've talked about the budget, and we've talked about the revenue problem, which we are very well aware of having, enrollment is a consideration, and one of the things that we're trying to increase to get to the status where we could potentially get ourselves into a more favorable revenue position from the state. Is there any reason to think that school choice would help us with that, knowing that right now it's less than for the per pupil spending that we have, but is there any reason to believe that that would drive us to the place that would lend itself?
Well, you'd have to, it's just math, right? So you would have to add what it would cost for benefits, and, you know, it's actually more difficult in the higher grades where students are not with one classroom teacher all the time, because you could have 40 new students in a particular grade, but they're spread across classes, and so what you're really doing is just you're increasing your class sizes without actually increasing.
Enrollment sufficient to drive us to that rate? That's what I just wanted to confirm. We're not so close to the bubble.
Right, yeah. I think, I looked at it, and now, full disclosure, it was before the revisions to the House Ways and Means proposal and the recent Senate proposal budget-wise. So I looked back in probably March, I think, and we were, you know, one and a half to $2 million away from that foundation threshold. So at, you know, if you're thinking, it's a lot.
And you could say, well, elementary, let's open up an elementary class of 20, you could get six.
Right.
And then you can't run a class, and then you're adding to the other classrooms.
Increasing classroom sizes. Okay, yep, just wanted to make sure I fully understood the implications.
Okay, thank you. I did have the $5,000 per pupil math, and I was like, huh.
Yeah, that feels like that's the wrong direction that we were trying to go at the moment.
Yeah, but again, you know, for some districts, the economics make perfect sense, and it can be a real lifesaver, so.
Yep.
Yep, you're not there right now.
Yep.
Okay, alright, so, let's see, so that commences that item. So now we'll move on then to actually voting on school choice for the 2024-2025 school year. So would anybody like to make a motion, either way, on school choice for next year?
I'd make a motion that we do not accept school choice.
And can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Oh, Starr, yes. Out of my, we're out of our order. Go ahead.
Loomis, yes.
Okay.
Percy, yes.
Great, thank you. Alright, next up on the agenda is our schedule of payments. So since the school committee last met, we have approved warrants 084S, 085S, and 087S. Okay. Then we've got the student representative to the school committee update. So bear with me one second, I'm just going to check and see if our student rep who is preparing to go perform at the concert was able to provide an update. She did intend to.
She's coming or going to something at every meeting.
Absolutely, every meeting.
Very busy.
Absolutely.
She came in and out of last meeting so impressively.
Yes, yes, okay. So we do not have an update this week, so I move to table item eight, the student representative to the school committee update until next session. Can I get a second?
Percy, a second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percy, yes.
Okay, great, alright. Next up is a discussion and vote to approve banner sponsors. Dr. Cabral?
So I have, Mrs. Kavanaugh is here, the athletic director could not be, but Ms. Kavanaugh is here. It is school committee policy to have vendors pre-approved by the school committee before they are put on advertising anywhere in the district, and so Ms. Kavanaugh is here to present the most recent group with some additional.
Thank you. So what you're looking at is a list of sponsors that the spring sports boosters would like to include. I just want to start by naming that we have amazing parents who devote hours and hours of their time to fundraising and making sure that our athletic programs get everything that they need. That being said, sometimes when there's turnover in our boosters programs, communication isn't sent down. So this is sent out at the beginning of the year, and boosters are supposed to come to you first to make sure that you approve sponsors before things have been hung up. This year, that communication was Ms. and me and Mrs. McDonald, we'll be right on top of that next year to make sure. So that's why some of these sponsors are already hanging.
Okay.
So there's a list in front of you, and I also just want to name that while I know that all of our sponsors are well-meaning, and their spirit is to support our programs, sometimes there are some that might not line up with our values, or the messaging that we might want to send our students, and so that's just something that I want to make sure that we consider as we look at the list of sponsors.
Okay. Alrighty, so reviewing the list of sponsors.
So all of the ones in red?
Yes.
Making sure I'm understanding correctly.
Are new.
Are new, that's, I thought that was the case in my prep work, but better than I asked.
Okay, and so, and I think, interestingly, I don't think we've had any come before us yet where we've had to maybe say, "Thank you very much," but not appropriate, so this will be maybe a little bit of a challenging conversation for us, but I will start off with saying that I believe the Liquor World sponsorship is not in line with our district messaging on health and wellness. I don't see any issues with any of the others. So thoughts on that or any others? And we'll figure out what the implication of that will be.
So we do have Shovel Town on here from a prior approval?
Shovel Town Brewery.
Yep. It is a restaurant. It's a brewery. Right, you're right, you're right.
I mean, Gianna does serve alcohol, I'm not going to lie.
Right, there are other places that, right, there are other sponsors that do serve, you know, Barrett's, there, you know, there are lots of restaurants on here that do serve alcohol.
I'm not disagreeing with your Liquor World comment, I'm just being respectful to the community and just like.
Yeah, Maguire's is on here, there's plenty of places that do serve alcohol, and where that might be, you know, a primary motivation for visiting for some patrons. So we can, I mean, we can certainly discuss the appropriateness of Shovel Town if you'd like. It was approved previously, but, you know, certainly if folks think that that is similar to Liquor World, we can discuss. Let's see if there were any others that maybe we had missed in the past, but I think everything else is fine. So any, any other thoughts? And do we know, I think I may, I may have asked this, so they already, they made a donation, and the banner, I understand, is actually hanging.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So once someone makes a donation, the banner is hung, is there a new banner created for the next season, or?
Yes, these are typically seasonal.
Yeah.
So every year, they, at the end of every season, they take the banners down, and they offer new sponsorships the following year, and the sponsors do change year to year.
Is it, is Liquor World the only sponsor on this banner?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so.
And it's quite a large banner. That's another, we need to have a follow-up discussion on what sponsorship means, because we have some sponsors who have long-term signage at the turf, at the track, that they have paid a lot of money for, and we want to make sure that they're getting their advertising dollars, and that others are not making smaller donations of maybe $500 and getting, you know, a 36 by 24 solo banner, while another program might sell $500 of banner space. It's one banner, and they have a small logo the size of a dinner plate. So we definitely.
If I could share with you, Athletic Director McDonald has actually done a survey of all the boosters to learn their process for this, and our hope is to collaborate with you to create a really concrete.
That would be great.
I guess, like you said, understanding of money versus size, and what are the sponsorships for Mosquito Stadium as a whole versus individual teams for next year, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Like certain events versus.
Yeah, so we look forward to.
Yes, I look forward to it as well.
I know it's been.
I think the boosters will as well.
Yeah, and everybody's super well-inten, yeah, the intentions are wonderful, the donors are so supportive, and, and I, yeah, I hate even having to have a negative conversation about it, but we also need to consider the appropriateness of having alcohol advertising at a high school sport.
Yep. Do we have the ability to return the donation and take down the sign? What is our?
Yeah, we haven't had to do that before. My, I would urge the boosters to, to, I would imagine that that would be how they would have to proceed, unfortunately, with, yeah, removing the banner and offering to refund the donation, which is, that's, it's very unfortunate. Any other, any other thoughts or questions?
Is this in the policy?
Yes.
That it can't be liquor?
No, so the policy, shoot, I should have printed it. The policy just says that the school committee has to approve all advertising on school property.
That I know.
Yeah. Because, yeah, but we can, I think as we build out and put more criteria together around, like we said, sizing, and, you know what I mean, getting, getting more standardization around, you know, pricing and sizing and things like that, we can certainly put guidelines in there around that, so that if, if a booster's organization is supported by somebody, if somebody comes up and offers, they'll, they'll have an understanding of, ooh, maybe not. And, you know, I think if you, again, I think where, where alcohol is very socially acceptable, I think if you, if you equated this to, would we accept a banner from a vape shop or a cannabis dispensary? Those are legal as well for adults, less socially acceptable, I think, but would we, I have a feeling that would get a stronger reaction, you know? But from a legality, adult consumption standpoint, there's no difference, right? So, that's just, that's just my opinion, I mean.
Kind of torments, I don't really see it that, as that big of a deal. But I would for cannabis. And if it's the same thing, then it's the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, any initial, your initial reaction was?
Yeah, just, wow, you walk into the park and you see Liquor World, hello! And I appreciate that they wanted to donate, and the boosters went out and got that, I just feel like it's kind of inappropriate for a baseball game.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I struggle with how to generalize the feedback, to not insert our own potential bias into it, right? Like I, so I, I do struggle with it being a business that is not more accessible to the participants in the sporting event, maybe as a way of thinking about it.
Yeah, because there are a lot of things that are legal out there, and we don't need to name them all, but.
That is my general.
Yeah, that would give us pause.
Because if it doesn't feel sort of more family-oriented.
Any other discussion? If not, I can try to word a motion, because this is, again, the first time we've had to accept with exceptions. Okay, so, let me try this. Would, can I get a motion to approve the additions to the banner sponsors list with the exception of Liquor World?
So moved, Loomis.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percy, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a discussion and vote to appoint members to the town subcommittees. So as we, as I think most of us are familiar with, the town needs us to reaffirm or offer updates to the school committee appointments to various town committees after the election, the town election each year. So our current appointments all expire on June 30th, and guidance from the town has been that we have the flexibility to craft our motion to either update our membership in the committees right now, or we can do it effective as of the start of the new fiscal year in July. And so this is, let's see, so this is a list of all of the assignments, but for today, the agenda item is just focus on the town subcommittee, so that's the audit committee, the budget subcommittee, the human rights committee, and the municipal building committee. And then although Ms. Wiseman is not here today, she did reach out to me and expressed in.
Deputy Ainsley?
Oh, oh, sorry, yes, sorry, thank you. She did reach out and expressed a desire to remain on the committee, so she is willing to stay on any committees to which she is currently assigned, so just passing that along as well. So wanted, how about we just go through one at a time?
Sure.
Alright, the most exciting of all committees, the audit committee.
No, that isn't the most exciting.
So, so I am currently on the committee. I am perfectly willing to stay on the committee, I enjoy the work, but if somebody would like the opportunity to learn the audit side of the town, I would be welcome to share that position and move along, so. Any takers? No? Okay, alright.
I work with audit in my real day job, and.
Okay, alright, so do we want, let me think, I think, let's discuss them all, and then we can, then we can just vote them one at a time, alright. Next up is the human rights committee. So right now, Kelly Percio is assigned to HRC, and do you have any, any thoughts on that, Kelly?
I just got started with them in January, so I would be happy to stay on.
Okay, alright, would anybody else, does anybody else have a strong desire to be appointed to the human rights committee? No, we're good with that? Okay, alright. MBTA Community Zoning Implementation Review Team, this is currently with Nancy.
Yeah. Oh, wait till town meeting, you'll be hearing all about it. That's great.
Yes, so.
I'll stay.
You will, you're willing to stay.
I don't think it's, I think it's only one more year anyway, so.
Okay, alright, any, does anybody else have a desire to oust Nancy from that committee?
Go ahead.
It's alright.
It's alright.
Okay, alright, let's see, the municipal building committee, so right now, we have Jackie and Nancy.
No, so the last time we did this, Jackie asked to be not on that committee, and Lauren took it.
Okay.
So I'm willing to stay.
Okay, are you willing to?
Oh, I am.
Okay, alright.
We're learning so much.
It's just gonna get good.
It's just gonna get really good.
I was willing to get involved, but you. I was willing to get involved, I was looking forward to actually being on a building committee and seeing a tour of something new, but I guess you guys will just have to invite me to the guests. I'll be an invited guest.
All public, you can attend.
That's true. Okay, and then the town budget subcommittee, Jackie and I are on that. Jackie is willing to stay on it, I would like to stay on it, but does anybody else have a strong desire to join the budget subcommittee? Nope. No?
You can have it.
Okay.
Tag you're in.
Okay, okay, alright then, so with that, then, let's just, for the record, we'll just vote each one separately. Okay, so can I get?
Sorry, can I ask one question?
Of course.
Some of the other committees I would like to get involved with, because I'm only doing one at the moment, but we can review those at a future time, ideally when Jackie's with us? Perfect, thank you.
We'll schedule, we'll schedule a future meeting to do the, just the school committees.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, great, that'll be great. Okay, so then, I make a motion to appoint, actually, I think we can, I think I can do one motion, list all of the positions. Okay, alright, alright, so, so I make a motion to appoint to the town, the town committees as follows, so audit committee Jennifer Starr, human rights committee Kelly Percio, MBTA Community Zoning Implementation Review Team Nancy DeLuca, municipal building committee Nancy DeLuca, town budgets, and, sorry, and Lauren Loomis, thank you, and town budget subcommittee Jackie Wiseman and Jennifer Starr. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percy, yes.
Okay, great, right. And then vote to approve the school improvement plans presentation schedule. Dr. Cabral?
Each year, the principals work with their school council, which is educators, parents, community members, and they present their school improvement plans for the following year. We are presenting the two dates upcoming for those presentations, May 23rd for Blanche Ames and RO, and June 6th for EMS and OA.
Okay. Any, any discussion or questions?
Let's do it. Yeah, I'm excited.
Okay. My request, just related to this, is to see if we can. My request just related to this is, is to see if we can get, make sure we get the presentations with our packets in advance.
Yes, please.
Very helpful, because there's a lot to read through and it's nice to have read through it.
Yes.
Ahead of time, okay. All right, then, would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the school improvement plans presentation schedule?
So move Loomis.
And can I get a second?
Second, Perseo.
Roll call vote?
Would be yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Perseo, yes.
Okay, all right, great. So next up, we have, let's tuck this away. We are on to public comment, so let me just, because it's been a while since we've had regular public comment with a large number of attendees, so. So I just want to review a few items that may be helpful to speakers. So speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. You need to begin with your name and address. You may not, you, you may not assign your time to another speaker. If you have comments, written comments, that take longer than three minutes to present, you can provide them to the committee after the meeting. Via email would be best for review and consideration at a later time if deemed appropriate. Topics for public comment are limited to matters that are within the scope of the school committee's authority, so that's budget, policy, and superintendent. And then, so because of that, comments that involve staff members or students. Let me just get here. So, so under most circumstances, staff, comments that involve staff members or students, the, the most appropriate channel for those concerns would be through the administrator of the school. Let's see, I think those are the main points that I just wanted to make sure that everybody is familiar with. And so with that, I know we do have, we have a, a number of folks here. I just want to start to see, does anybody have any, any comments that you'd like to make on items that were discussed on the agenda tonight? We'll begin with just making sure that if anybody has comments on specific items that we've already discussed and or voted on. Are there any comments related to those items? No, okay. Okay, so then, so at this point, we will open up to general comments. You may proceed to the microphone and our, our goal will be to just keep the comment, the overall comment section to about 15 minutes. We can reassess at the end of that time period if it takes significantly longer. And we have a significant number of folks who still want to make comments.
This is awkward. Time to start now?
Yeah, do you want to just, you can hold-
I am the drama club teacher. We had pizza, I'm gonna blame it on that.
Feel free to hold it if that's easier.
I like your adaptation.
We better be drama club. So I'm gonna skip my intro, because I think I'm really gonna be pressed for time. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna get straight into it. We stand before you today.
Can you just begin with your name and address?
Oh, my name is Zachary Dyer. I'm an English teacher here at OA, so I basically live at 100 Lothrup Street here in Easton, Mass. I'm speaking on behalf of the Easton Educator Association. We stand before you today because school committee members said they hope to continue this conversation. We hope you meant it, as we have yet to receive a response from the school committee over the last two weeks. Dr. Cabral remarked last session that the issue with our district is a revenue issue, not a spending issue. The EA has long recognized that a revenue issue exists in this nation, in the state, and in this town. That said, we also recognize that this is a spending issue. After all, we are spending our revenue. In the view of the EA, every spending issue is a priorities issue, and in this case, we ask that you reconsider your priorities. In your last session, 113 members of the EA came to argue against an additional vice principal position in the middle school. We cited evidence where that 91% of middle school staff oppose this position. Instead, we argued that the same resources would be better allocated towards staff that work directly with students to prevent problem behaviors, our paraprofessionals, adjustment counselors, and other specialists. Today here, Dr. Cabral suggesting new vice principal is shocking precisely because we know how tight the money is in our budget. Behavior concerns have been at the forefront of this proposal from the start. The hiring of the current vice principal did not reduce incidents at EMS, because a vice principal can never reduce behavioral incidents. That will not stop the district from claiming their plan worked. Keep the following in mind next year when the district begins showing data that a steep decline in discipline. First, the eighth grade responsible for half of all discipline reports will have left the building and entered Oliver Ames next fall. Expect a large reduction next year. Second, a recent meeting at EMS led to, led to staff being directed that they no longer needed to enter every behavioral incident into Aspen. Teachers had been previously told to enter every behavior. They were now told that they should only enter behavior that warrants office intervention. These changes will surely lead to a very impressive bar graph for next year, but be wary of accepting them without question. Let us focus then on what does work, direct intervention. Three open positions for paraprofessionals exist in EMS, and two of those open positions are in our therapeutic learning program. We would argue that rather than hiring the vice principal, we should focus on retaining staff that actually prevent behavior. Paraprofessionals and school adjustment counselors are those people. In this committee's last meeting, Dr. Cabral noted that this position was only 0.3% of the total budget for FY 2025. Just 0.3%, or roughly $140,000, is the total amount our paraprofessional unit received for their largest raise yet, a raise of $1.20. Dr. Cabral noted that the middle school is understaffed because she cannot find people to staff these positions. And we ask you this, who's surprised we can't find staff when a job at Target or Starbucks offers better pay and benefits? The paraprofessionals that work in our classrooms work diligently for salaries that after a year's worth of work don't even break $35,000. This is happening in a state with an average salary of $78,000, and it is shameful. This district evidently has the cash to start closing that gap, and we suggest you start. You see, we truly do understand how lean this budget is, because we've been the victims of cost cutting for quite a while now. The district has gradually reduced its spending on teacher salaries by not hiring teachers to replace retirees. As a matter of fact, the money spent on teacher salaries has been consistently reduced in this district. From 2018 to 2022, spending on classroom teachers has fallen from 53% of our budget to 50% in 2022. That is a gap that by 2022 created a $1.34 million deficit in spending on classroom teachers. The greatest shock to our staff is that the majority of that gap, nearly 960,000, comes from cuts to our special education teachers.
You are, I just, you are at time, are you, are we-
I can, I'm gonna, I'll just jump straight ahead to a little metaphor. I need a little teacher, so I gotta do it. So there's more data here, but we'll release it publicly, don't worry, we'll give that for you.
Thank you.
So, to close, I'll end with a metaphor my father, a carpenter, would appreciate. We are working in a house where the foundation is buckling. You got crews and crews of people holding back that weight, but you're not down here with us. You're upstairs talking about buying a more efficient heat pump and installing solar panels, all noble goals. But as you're talking, you're letting the team in the basement bear this weight alone with fewer and fewer resources to get the job done. There is no house without a foundation. There is no school without our paras and teachers. So we're begging you to stop talking about solar panels and heat pumps and start funding the people fixing the foundation. Thank you.
Any others who wish to comment? No? Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So I want to encourage our, our huge audience at home to just keep in mind that there are a lot of end of year events going on. We just came from one in the cafeteria, which is a, a great display. Hopefully, if it's still going on, people can check it out. There's also a spring concert after this. I know you all like to talk about the fun things. So I won't do that list, that's fine. But, but please check the district calendar, because there are a lot of really great end of year ceremonies and displays and concerts, and it's really great entertainment. I also want to note that we, with Christina DiNapoli on board, we've been able to head to a lot more job fairs. We've gotten, we hosted the MPDE job fair here with over 50 different districts from around the Commonwealth, the Bridgewater State Job Fair. We're going to Carver this weekend, the Merck Job Fair at BU. And there are a lot more coming, so we've been able to expand our net, so to speak. Also, we announced at our last meeting that it was, educator appreciation week was upcoming, and we talked about the Grandi's ice cream truck. I'm disappointed to say that one of the days it rained, and I was hoping it wouldn't, but hopefully people found windows to go there. And, and today was the other. The PACs, the PTOs, the administrators at the buildings have really done a great job of making sure that they're appreciated. It's a good opportunity for gestures, but it's something that should be remembered year round. And our equity statement, we, you know we're working on our strategic plan. Our equity statement is almost finished as well. We had a draft last year, and then we brought it to a lot of different constituency groups. I appreciate everybody who gave us input on it. We want to finalize that. It's going to be incorporated with our strategic plan coming out soon. We have some entry plans coming up. Director Davidson, Perez, and Livia Ramus are going to be presenting those plans with actions recommended. And we have also been promoting our project of Story of Self and Us. We have a lot of staff and student participation in that. We hope the school committee will participate. We were presented that at the NRT Fair. We'll be at the Pride Fair and different opportunities for people to come and do that. But the packet to participate is on the website, I think on the DEIA website. And so if people are interested, they should take a look at that. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments for Dr. Cabral? All right. Thank you. Let's see, next up, Assistant Superintendent Notes, did she provide you with anything?
No.
Oh, oh.
I'm actually here.
Oh, great. Yay.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, she is the voice.
Hi, sorry. So I, so like Dr. Cabral, I just wanted to start off to say happy teacher appreciation week to our educators. It's a great time to, to celebrate them, although it should be done all year round, just like Dr. Cabral said. I, I perfectly agree with that. My note is I really just want to highlight the excellent turnout we had for STEAM Night last week. Last Friday night, we had over, about 200 kids and their families show up at Blanche Ames, where they were just fully immersed in, in all wonderful STEAM-related activities. Thank you to our community members, our amazing clubs at Oliver Ames. We had a fantastic sixth grader that stepped up and led his own table. It was just such a great event and so many wonderful things. Also, some teachers at Oliver Ames hosted some tables as well, so we just want to thank them. And, and the, I don't know, for those that were in attendance, the robotics team brought their robot and were shooting out T-shirts, which was so fun for the kids to see, and everybody had a great time, so. It was, it's such a great event. I always love, I always love having it, and a big shout out to the STEAM team for planning a wonderful event. Our STEAM team also is in the process of bringing back the event at the middle school for the fall, so that's our next thing that we're working on, and just lots of great things to come. So that's what I want to share. I'm sure I'm leaving something out, but I just wanted to just share that with you right now. I'm sure, I, I know that there's also the Special Olympics and all that, which I know you all will probably be talking about as well.
We're not gonna.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Pruitt? No? All right, school committee notes, Nancy.
Do you want to let Lauren go first?
I feel like she knows. I think we should let her.
Please, let Lauren go first.
Okay, all right, after you, she has to go, because I'm almost doing it.
All right, I just have to, so this evening, well, from five to seven, down in the cafeteria, over in the cafeteria, the Applied Arts and Sciences, is that what it's called? I don't know.
Business and Applied Arts.
Whatever, it's people that make metal things and chairs and clothes and food. They, they're giving out cookies, it's great. But they, the kids are so talented, I give so much credit to each of those teachers and that they, the chopped thing that I remember, I told you I was a judge, awesome, and-
How do I get on that committee?
Well, I don't know, but you gotta be old, I think. So anyway, it's going on and it's amazing. The other thing last night was the National Junior Honor Society induction, and I think there were about 80, how many kids? 88 kids. And just a fabulous job, nobody got burned with the candle and, and everybody. Ryan McKinley did a great job emceeing, and all the staff, faculty, everybody that was there. It was really nice, so thank you. Okay, I'm done.
All right, Lauren?
Chair Starr, I'm so sorry, when, when I have a second, there, I did forget something that I do want to share. I'm so sorry.
That's okay, you can, you can interject.
My votes are in the car, I was just driving, and so I just ran upstairs. So we are offering the STEAM program again, so I just wanted to make sure that all families know that that will be coming out soon. We just were able to appoint our coordinators. I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning. So more information for our summer enrichment academy will be coming out within the next week or so for families, so keep an eye out for that.
Okay, super excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All righty, Lauren?
Okay, so I just want to say that Jen and I had the pleasure of going to the State House.
Voice of God again.
Can you hear me now?
You can borrow mine if you need.
It'll go to-
It's blinking, for anyone who's just wondering why she's doing that.
Okay, can you hear me now? All right, so Jen and I went to the State House for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees meeting, which was a really nice time. We first meet at the UMass Center, is that what it's called? Something like that, yeah. In downtown Boston, and we meet with all different school committees from across the state. And then, then we walk over to the State House, and we have this amazing lunch that is catered by students from all the VOTEC schools in the state. And we, we brought students with us who were amazing, and they were so excited for all the food. They like, their like, main goal was to take it home to their parents. It was so cute. And then we met with our, our legislators, we met with Senator Timmeltie, and he shared with us what he, what is on deck for this week with the budget and the, with the Means and Weight Committee, so. So that was a great day. And that's all that has not been mentioned that I'd like to say, but-
Talk about STEAM Night as a parent.
And, well, you can talk about the summer, the Special Olympics.
I could, yeah, so.
I couldn't go, so she has to, yeah.
Right, but Jen, Jen went as well, so. So STEAM Night as a parent was, was amazing. My son, who is in fourth grade, and even though it's primarily just for K through two, he loved it. He was so excited to get his passport all stamped, and he loved going to all the tables. And he loved when Stripes came, who, you know, our tiger took a picture with him. What else could I say about STEAM Night? I think that's it. Also, the fourth grade abilities awareness was canceled because they have, they weren't able to get enough volunteers, which was really sad. So all parents out there who are watching, they're gonna try to do it again, so. So if you are able to volunteer, I know there's so many things going on right now that you're volunteering for, but, but that was a sad one to not happen, so. Okay, I'm gonna move on now. Thank you.
Kelly?
Sure, so I have, I was also at STEAM Night. I was there as a parent. My pre-K, he's five, will be going to Blanche Ames for kindergarten, but he's in a Montessori kindergarten right now. He had a blast. It was actually an amazing opportunity because it was open to everyone for him to actually just spend more time at Blanche Ames and see his beautiful building. He goes to school and tells all his classmates he's going to a really cool building next year. So that was good, with tigers in it, because he got to see Stripes as well. So if we're being real, he's very excited about that. He also got to meet one of his big sister's teachers and learn science from her, so now he's as cool as she is, which was also high on his list. But I do want to thank all of the community members that volunteered at that. It was really great to see. The HRC table was beautiful, I say that selfishly because I'm part of that group as well, but honestly, all of it, and the high schoolers who volunteered their times, and the boy with his, I'm not gonna be able to do justice to the name of his program, but he has like an entire YouTube channel on weather, and he is incredible, Sebastian, incredible. And my son took in everything he said and thought it was the coolest thing on the planet because he's also into everything weather-related. So it was very, very impressive, it was an amazing showcase of, of events. So that was great. I straddled parent and school committee last night at National Junior Honor Society. It was awesome. I'm just glad no kids wiped out either. All the girls in their heels were just a tad bit nervous that they would wipe out besides the flame, that was the other consideration. So it was a beautiful event, though. It was really nice to see those kids be honored. I always think about the fact, you know, I'm, I have a college student who's graduating, who graduated with six feet apart, wearing a mask here at OA, and now gets a proper graduation, and because he was a 2020 kid, so he, we sat really, really far away, and he wore a mask the whole time, and it was insanely hot out. It did, he did have an OA mask, for those of you who remember. These eighth graders had to leave the school year and never really got a proper set of experiences themselves in all the ways that they would have celebrated. We didn't really get the same set of goodbye events even their fifth grade year because we had to be so restrictive. So it was really, really nice to honor them by them having to have like a special event, and just seeing them all in rows together might seem odd to other people, but for me, it was really, really nice to see because their fifth grade year, we had to be so careful even on what we could do. So anytime we get to bring them together and like truly recognize and honor all the stuff for the kids, it's, it's really nice, especially for kids who are in those, those big years where they didn't get the same transition. So, so that was really nice. There are a ton of amazing events up and coming that I do encourage everyone to celebrate, and I know Jen has others to talk about. I also do want to take a moment to highlight that the, Dr. Cabral mentioned the Easton Pride Event. It is on Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it's at the Rock Parade. So right in the center of town, there's a ton of amazing vendors who are coming to that as well, and it's another great opportunity to represent all the diversity of our community. And we do have a student member on the HRC as well, who is making sure that we have good high school representation as well. So I think it's really important for our kids to also feel supported in that way by seeing the community support them at the Pride Event as well. And thank you, and happy Educator's Week for all that you do. It should be all year long, but I'm glad that at least there's a week to celebrate you.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, so a couple of, let's see, a couple of MASC updates. There is a resolutions webinar tonight that I registered for. They'll probably post the, post the presentation and recording online, regardless of whether or not you registered, but I will certainly take some time to listen to the recording and pass along any information that I think would be relevant, especially where we've been talking about those expiring resolutions and just familiarizing ourselves with that overall process. They also had a, a session recently, and I believe if it's not posted, it will be, on liaising with your special ed PAC and EL PAC, LPAC. So I actually attended, I believe it was the same or similar session at the state conference in November. It was very informative, so I would encourage any, any of us who are interested in it, I'll, I'll see when the link is posted, I'll definitely share it out, but it was, it was a worthwhile presentation when I saw it in November. We've had some incredible events happening recently, so just some highlights that haven't been hit on yet. The art show at OA was last Friday, and oh, like always blown away, just, just, you know, cafeteria full of the most incredible artworks, and then you get the, the Art Force students with their full portfolios. So beautiful job. I imagine it's a ton of work to put that all together, to set it up, to break it down. So thank you to all of the staff and volunteers who helped make that a lovely night. It was really beautiful. And then the two jazz bands performed at the Hatch Cell, Hatch Shell on Sunday. I made it in for it, and we dodged raindrops. So it was a little bit before, both bands performed, might be biased, think they blew everybody else away. And then when they were done, kind of made my way back to where I'd parked, and then the skies opened up. So, so I was very, very happy that the students had great performances. We had a really big turnout from Easton, there were lots of parents, grandparents, family members and friends there, and staff as well, and, and school leaders. So Chrissy and I, Mrs. Pruitt and I connected, she was there as well. So it was really a beautiful day, so congratulations again to both of those jazz bands for all that you've accomplished this year. Of course, we're heading into all of the senior events with their last, last week of school and then exams and all the events after, so I just want to commend Mrs. Kavanaugh and the OA administrative staff for doing such a great job of communicating all of this information out to parents, and the, the athletic director and her staff as well, there's monogram night, and just all kinds of logistical work happening, and we really appreciate the proactive, thorough communication. I feel like everything they send out does a great job of anticipating questions, so, so thank you to all for that. And then last night, finally, Easton Wings of Hope and the YMCA had a session here in this room. Mr. Davidson was there as well. And so it was on youth, youth, healthy behaviors and substance abuse risk. I have to say turnout was a little low, which is unfortunately not unusual for these programs and events that we tend to bring in. So I believe they are planning to come back in the fall. I know it's a tough night. We had the National Junior Honor Society, and I think the middle school parents and families, and even staff would have been a great audience for this because it was so much information that I think is really pertinent, especially as, as kids are reaching adolescence. And they had the Hidden in Plain Sight exhibit set up, which is basically a mock bedroom. And I have to tell you honestly, I saw that about 10 years ago with my older kids, that was before vaping was a thing, that was before cannabis was legalized. And it is night and day, and shocking how many products are out there that allow kids to hide the substances that they may be using. It's very easy for get them, to get them, they're very sophisticated, and even if you think you know what you're looking for, I would encourage anybody who has the opportunity to see the Hidden in Plain Sight exhibit to, to take a look, because you, you'd be very, very surprised at how much stuff just looks like normal, everyday, you know, self-care products, and, you know, they have water bottles, and it just really, it was very shocking and eye-opening. So I do hope that we can, you know, get a night in the fall that will, and get the communication out and hopefully get more people, because it was, it was really important info. Yes. Finish? Oh, uh, yeah, I think that's all I had, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make one more comment about, about public comment. I know that the school committee has responded, but I want to just say that there's an annual staff meeting to talk about budget before it's presented to the school committee every year. We did propose a lot of dates in April, and we're told that they really wouldn't work for staff. Of course, we know it's a really busy time of year, and we respect that, but we, as a leadership team, haven't been asked to talk about any of that, and we hope that if there are questions, that people will reach out, because I know, I'll just speak for the leadership team, I know that we'd all be really happy to answer any questions or have any kind of discussions. We always are, we just haven't heard anything yet, and we would be more than, than happy to engage in conversations.
Okay. All right, so with that-
Jen, if I may.
Sure.
I, I should have said something before that I didn't say. So I want to take responsibility and own my comments at prior meeting. I am still learning my role, and it is part of the process of my education to figure out what I can and can't weigh in on and what times I can do that. But I do just want to remind everyone that, you know, while it is important to have a conversation, we are also subject to open meeting law, and we need to follow those policies. And we have policies and procedures that we need to follow as part of our school committee responsibilities. So I am still learning all of those, and I will get better at them over time, I'm the newbie. But I do just want to remind everyone, you know, as Dr. Cabral mentioned about the hearings, there are lots of topics that come up that we can't hear in open meeting and that we can't hear as a school committee, because we have to be mindful of how we respect our policies and procedures. So I encourage you all to continue to use all of the mechanisms at your disposal, to meet with your administration, to meet with your principals, to work through issues with them, so that, because there are things that we just simply cannot discuss at open meeting for obvious reasons, as Chairman Star has mentioned. So the conversations are important, we just need to make sure they happen in the right and safe ways to respect everyone involved. So I own my accountability for any ways that I might have been unclear, but I'm learning, right, as, as I, as I need to do. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, you didn't, you didn't have to, but thank you, I, I respect that you wanted to make a statement.
Well, and I want to be respectful to everyone, you know, and, and their roles in the process. I'm learning, it's like, okay.
Great, thank you. All right, so with that, I will make a motion to go into executive session to return to open session. This is pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, 21A7, to comply with open meeting law to review minutes of prior executive sessions from January 4th, April 9th, and April 24th, 2024, and pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for Easton Educators Association Unit A MOA. And in my opinion, having this discussion in, in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Persio, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Persio, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, welcome back, everybody. All righty, so the next item on the agenda is a possible, was a possible vote to release executive session minutes, and we are not moving ahead with releasing these at this time, so just to be safe, do we want to? No, I think that's fine. We don't think we need to, yeah, it's a possible vote, we're fine, okay. And then the next item after that is the vote to approve the MOA, and this is for Unit A. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the MOA for Unit A? What's the wording that we want?
And not release.
So that's why I wish I had written it down. You did. Lynn wrote it down.
Okay, thank you.
Um, approve upon ratification by the EEA.
Okay, so approve the, approve the Unit A MOA upon the ratification of, of the EEA. All right.
So move, DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Okay. And finally, our next meeting is May 23rd at 6:00 PM, and with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Thanks, everybody, have a great night.
Thanks, Adam.